Well, why don't we go ahead and get started? Is everyone ready to go? Is everyone almost ready to go? Ready to go? Is everyone now ready to go? And are we ready to go? Okay. And so Rob's continuing to work with Ray to get his computer hooked up over there for a presentation later in the meeting, so we'll go ahead and start anyway. So I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone here, and we'll take roll call. Mike Smith ended up at the last-minute heating problem, so trustee Smith is not here. I think everyone else is here. So we're ready to go. So we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag kind of moves around, but it's right there now. I pledge allegiance to the highest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So item number three on the agenda is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any request from any trustee to change the order of the agenda or otherwise revise it? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move through the agenda as it's been published. So now we come to public comment. This is the time for public comment on non-agenda items, for items that we won't be discussing tonight, but items that you would like us as trustees and the district to know about. So is there any comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll move on to, excuse me, the Health Insurance Trust Report, which is on on page five. It's for the month of October. Then, Rob, if you don't mind, your superintendent's report is next. I know you're multitasking, so.
Just had a couple of items to report on this evening, mainly around the school visits. So this last week, several trustees and I had an opportunity to visit Lewis &amp; Clark, Paxson, and Rattlesnake. Just wanted to report that really positive visits, both Lewis &amp; Clark and Paxson have new principals, so it was an opportunity for us to interact with the new principals and get their perspective on the schools. And then also at Paxson, pretty valuable, we got to spend some time in, not only in a training for our English Language Arts curriculum, which was really neat to see that and see how the training worked with teachers at Paxson, but also we got to spend some time in a classroom as well and talked to the principal about their dual-language immersion model. So thought the visit was very productive. All three schools, just outstanding opportunities for kids. I ran into a student that I knew from Rattlesnake when we were in Rattlesnake, and he's much older now, he's a librarian, so. And so that was great to see former students as well. Then one of my former students from Sentinel is the PE teacher at Rattlesnake, so I got to see her as well. So really liked the school visits, I liked the format. We have another one coming up at the Ag Center, and I'm gonna forget the date, but it's, Pat's got it.
The 4th.
December 4th. So that's all I had for tonight.
Thanks. Then we move on to the Montana Conference of Educational Leadership, which we use the acronym EMSO. And so Ann Wake, if you have a bit of a report, since there were three other trustees and you, but you were in a leadership role, so you got to see some behind-the-scenes conversation.
Thank you. I'd like to thank trustee Holland, trustee Kendall, and trustee Lorenzen for accompanying me to the EMSO meeting. It was very fruitful. I think they learned a lot about what we call the Delegate Assembly that we have every year. That's now been switched to this time of the year rather than in the summertime. We had a great keynote speaker named Jamie Volner, and I believe it was 12. Those resolutions have now been voted on again by, I believe, oh my gosh, Superintendent Watson. I am having a horrible time tonight. Just keep laughing, it's okay. But anyway, they voted on those resolutions, and they're going to be discussed again. We have three groups that we work with during our business meetings, and one of them is the group that's in charge of the resolutions, and they're going to be having a double-A caucus call on the 20th of December. And if you're interested in hearing what they are discussing, because all of these resolutions have something to do with our schools, then the telephone number, I'll give you the telephone number, it's 866-509-3068. Then you have to put a PIN number in, 39055, and you can listen to the conference itself. And what they're going to be doing is changing from double-A caucuses to B caucuses, A caucuses, and C caucuses, and every other month they're going to go and have a general caucus with everybody in the state that is in any kind of classification. And I will, I'm sorry, what?
What's the date of that call again?
December the 20th. Pardon me? It'll be at noon. If it changes, I'll let you all know. The other thing that I gave to everybody, I don't know if you saw it or not, is this little piece of paper. And Lance did a workup of all, some schools in the state. And what this reflects is an annual growth in the general fund budget from 1991 until 2020. And if you go across and look at it, it is very interesting reading. I didn't want to go through everything on here, but I believe that you can peruse it yourself. The conference was great. Next year it will be here in Missoula, and so I hope we get more attendance. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that report. Now we move on to six items on the consent agenda. Let me double-check. There are two items on the consent agenda. Items are placed on the consent agenda when they are routine perfunctory items that we see each month or on a regular basis, and so there won't be any more discussion concerning them, although we do provide for an opportunity for public comment. And so the recommendation from the administration is that the trustees, kind of different terminology. One is to approve the attached revenue and expenditures report, and the other one is to acknowledge the attached list of high school students requesting to attend other school districts. I think as we talked at an earlier meeting, since we can't prevent anyone from going to the school they want, so we do acknowledge that they are doing so. So is there a motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Second by trustee Kendall. As I indicated, there won't be any trustee discussion, but is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the two items on the consent agenda, please indicate your approval by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we move on to item 7A1, which is old business, which is to approve the second reading of Board Policy 3110, which is titled Entrance, Placement, and Transfer. As the board will recall, we discussed it on October 22nd. It was sent out for public comment. No public comment has been received. A copy of the policy is in the packet, and the recommendation is that the trustees adopt the revised Board Policy 203110, Entrance, Placement, and Transfer. Is there anything else you want to add, Superintendent Watson? Any questions of anyone? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 3110, Entrance, Placement, and Transfer? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, since we did discuss it in an earlier meeting. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting the revised Board Policy 3110, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. We come to A2, which is approve the second reading of Board Policy 3225, Bullying, Harassment, and Intimidation. Again, we had a longer discussion when we had its first consideration on October 22nd. It was sent out for public comment. No public comment was received, and the recommendation is therefore that the trustees adopt the revised Board Policy 3225, Bullying, Harassment, and Intimidation Prevention. Are there any questions first? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess to clarify, so the only change is that which is bolded and underlined on the third page that says nothing prohibits individuals from reporting complaints to law enforcement. That's our only change in this one, right? Okay, thanks.
Right, and I believe that's pursuant to changes in state law, so that's, we're getting it into compliance with the state statute. Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the revised Board Policy 3225, Bullying, Harassment, and Intimidation Prevention? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 3225, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we come to three, which is 3310, Student Discipline. And again, this is in the same vein of, we have considered it at a first reading, it was published for, or posted for public comment. No public comment was received. Thus the recommendation is that the trustees adopt the revised Board Policy 3310, Student Discipline. Are there any questions first? Seeing none, then is there a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 3310? Moved by trustee Kendall. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Service. All those in, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting the revised Board Policy 3310, Student Discipline, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we move on to B1, which is to grant permission to issue a request for proposal for the lease of the administration building on Sixth Avenue. And I believe, Pat, you're going to address it. We did have this on, I think at least once, if not twice, as information-only items, and now we're moving toward a recommendation to allow permission to issue the RFP.
Yeah, thank you. So this is the second meeting in a row with the RFP and the lease attached, and certainly the third time, if not more, that we've talked about the RFP for the lease of the administration building. The school districts aren't required to issue an RFP to lease a facility, but this was the direction that the committee and the board felt would be the most appropriate. And as structured, the RFP anticipates responses by May 5th, which means there's plenty of opportunities for prospective lesses of the building to develop their response and to examine the property. So at this time, we're requesting that the board authorize the publication of the RFP. And I'd also like to thank the committee that worked on developing the RFP and the attached lease, trustees Lorenzen and Smith, and Burleigh McWilliams and Superintendent Watson.
Any questions for Pat?
I just have one. So there is a lease attached, but tonight we're just agreeing to issue an RFP. There may be future lease negotiations and some details, but in the broadest picture, this is the lease that would be the subject of any negotiations.
That's exactly, exactly right. So the intention of attaching the lease is to give a prospective proposer an opportunity to see what it would look like, but for sure the board would have another crack at approving those terms.
Any other questions, trustee Kendall?
Is there, can you give us a sense of what kind of resident, or what do you call it, occupant would find value in this building, because it is sort of a unique kind of old building?
Oh, I know that former Superintendent Thane had conversations, and I've had conversations with different groups. Two groups that I've, individuals I've talked to have talked about a boutique hotel, others have talked about office space. And so yeah, we're kind of interested and curious to see what the potential use would be.
The fact that it's not ADA accessible is that, that's probably going to preclude some folks who might want to go in there.
You know, I think we anticipate that whoever leases it would do so for a longer term with pretty healthy capital investment, which may include some improvements like those. So, and that may not be the case, but certainly that's what we'd expect if they were going to make it for public use.
Any other questions? Trustee.
Is there precedent in Montana for a school building being leased or used for something like a hotel? Has that happened anywhere? There's lots of McMinnimans in Oregon, obviously, but those probably aren't still owned by the school districts there either. They're probably sold. I'm just curious whether that's a lease. I'll keep talking.
Oh, there it goes. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm not familiar with any. It's a good question.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees grant permission to issue a request for proposal to lease the administration building on Sixth Street, with the understanding that the lease that's included in the agenda is the current version, but may be subject to some negotiations once the tenant might be identified. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there a board discussion? I just, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I've been trying to tell a lot of people, and I hope that people are spreading the word among their networks, because one of the things that we've seen in Missoula over the past couple of years is sort of a shock and horror when people realize that things are happening to the historic buildings that we all treasure. And I think now is the time to make sure that our community and that neighborhood understand that something different is going to happen there, and now is the time to try to think about what plans those might be, what community organizations are poised to make something cool happen there. Because what, you know, it's going to happen anyway. If, you know, if a project goes forward, that's when people will have opinions, but now is the time to have plans. So I just want to encourage everyone in this room, and then also anyone that's watching at home, to spread the word, make sure that people know that this is happening.
Any other comments? I just have one. I just want to thank the committee in part for their thoughtfulness about taking the approach to look forward, look, move forward as a lease opportunity first, because I think there have been times when sales as the only opportunity has resulted in the kind of situation trustee Decker was just talking about. And so this allows for, as we know from looking at Cold Springs, looking for compatible uses that, you know, meet our interests as well as the interests of the public. So thank you to the committee for all the hard work that you did on this. So thanks to trustee Smith and trustee Lorenzen. And public comment?
I just wanted to follow up on trustee Decker's comment to say that in the time spent publishing the RFP and getting our press release ready today, we did speak with the Historic Preservation Officer, who is also going to do outreach to the Historic Preservation Council or Committee. So that is one user group that's definitely being made aware.
Thanks for that information, Ann. Any other comments? Any public comment? And if you have an unusual spelling, first or last name, if you can help our secretary for that, and then if you turn the mic on.
I don't. My name is Ryan Montgomery. I own Montgomery Distillery here in town with my wife, and I am one of those interested in this building. I have been for quite some time. It's a beautiful, historical, architecturally significant building in a great location. And I have a comment and a request. The comment is, in the research and due diligence that I've done on this building in the last many, many months, as Mr. McHugh alluded to, the capital costs involved in bringing the building up to code, let alone any sort of additional use on top of that, are significant and run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. ADA is just one of the issues. So when the capital costs are that high, it's a little bit less attractive for an investor or developer to enter into a lease without having the ability to own what they're putting that much money into. So my request is that in addition to accepting RFPs for a lease, is that you also accept proposals for purchase. Even if lease is the direction you want to go, this will give you another option, at least options to look at and see what the market might bear for a purchase price. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Jenny Montgomery, co-owner of Montgomery Distillery. And yeah, I just wanted, you know, I certainly agree with everything Ryan said. I also want to just speak to the significance of the building as Missoula's first public high school. And if any of you have taken a walk through the building, I think that it really is a diamond in the rough. There are so many little architectural details in there. And I think that having experienced the grief as a community of losing the Merck, and I know a lot of business folks looked at that building, really wanted to save it, couldn't come up with a use that made sense and penciled out. This is a really different case. I think that the admin building has all kinds of potential. And so I'm hoping that in your score sheet there, when you talk about asset preservation, that we don't just think about the land that the building is sitting on, but the fact that this is part of Missoula's history. It's truly beautiful. It could be shared with the community and open to the community at a time when our past is rapidly disappearing, and Missoula is starting to look very, very different. So just, you know, I'm sure that you all are mindful of that, but we really care a lot about the building. We're a little obsessed with it. So just wanted to get that on record, and thank you very much for your.
...
... If we are awarded this funding, it's a significant amount of money that is promised for multiple years. And so if you look at the grant on page forty-five, the grant is Montana's Advanced Opportunity Plan, and half the money is specifically for things that happen ... In three years recommendations, one of the recommendations was how we build a bridge from middle school into high school and a pathway to help students their career interests and opportunities into high school pathways. So what we hope to do with this money is for that sixty percent that's often out-of-pocket money for parents, is to really support the student organizations and things that happen in the middle schools that really start to invite interest and opportunity for students as they ramp up into high school. So for example, looking at business student organizations in middle schools, that would be opportunities for students then to carry that interest into our finance pathways and our business pathways throughout our high schools. So right now, our parents pay for our students to do those things. We pay for the stipends. We pay for student transportation. All of these pieces of funding would now be covered under the grant. So there's great opportunity to catch more kids and to really entice their interests and passions and really make learning more relevant and meaningful at an early age as we really build a strong bridge into high school. Another part of that would be ensuring that every child has an experiential learning opportunity, whether it's through job shadowing or sometime, some kind of internship when they get into high school. Right now, we, we do that in pockets across our high schools. Using this money, we would ensure that every child has that opportunity and really make sure that those opportunities are well grounded and founded within our community and the, the job opportunities that are in our students' futures. So it's really, really exciting, and it's all about hitting that button at the right time and hoping that we're in line to receive the money.
Any questions for Elise or Superintendent Watson? Trustee Decker?
Yeah. It's a super exciting opportunity. I hope you have fast fingers.
Yeah.
I, I'm just, I'm curious as to whether the, the plan of approach would be to eliminate or like pay parents back or, or support fees that are currently administered or find a way to actually offer programs in places where maybe they hadn't been offered because parents wouldn't be as likely to pay for them. Because I'm, I'm wondering if there may be activities that take place in some of our schools or some of our programs that are currently fee-based, and parents would certainly like to see those fees go away. But there are also maybe students who don't access programs because they're not offered in those places. And so how we're going to audit that question, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, especially when we think about the middle schools.
Absolutely. That's exactly what this money would be for, to make sure that no matter what middle school you go to, you, you know, any child has that opportunity to be a part of the student organizations, to explore their career options, to make sure that they are making some interesting ideas and thought into what their high school experience will be. Absolutely. Right now, it is in pockets. We have some student organizations starting to be developed in some middle schools and not others. And so making sure that that happens across all of our middle schools and having that equal opportunities moving forward. So absolutely, I'm glad you, you asked about that because that's a huge part of this.
Any other questions? Trustee Stewart?
Can you give some examples of these organizations? Because at Target, we don't have the programs. I'm just curious what they are.
Right. Like one, um, one student organization we are just starting is at Washington Middle School around students who have voiced interest in joining the business pathway. And right now, parents pay for the students to be transferred over to Missoula College of Ed for some of their learnings. The stipend is paid for from either parent donations and, and the building funds, as well as just other kind of curriculum components to the organization. So that's one way in which it's totally funded based on interest and, and, and community involvement, whereas we want to make sure that that happens across all three middle schools and it's, it's one in which we can strengthen so that no matter what middle school you go to, you get this opportunity and then how you bridge into high school, you've had this initial interest and understanding and passions are developed that enable you to choose the right coursework and interest when you get into high school. And so really helping to bridge that gap. So. Does that help answer your question? Okay, good.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees approve the grant application summary. So is there a motion or approval of the grant application summary with the understanding that it's not a done deal? Moved by trustee Wake and second by trustee Duggar. Is there any board discussion? Other than I'll try to take you up on your offer of coming over and pushing buttons.
We're at darkness.
Yeah. Any other board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the grant application summary, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to B1 and, and two, slightly different, but two different areas of support from Department of Health and Human Services. So Pat, the first one is to ratify the renewal of the Department of Health and Human Services Refugee Support Services Grant, and this is elementary and secondary?
That's correct. Elementary and secondary. And this is a continuation of a grant that Shirley Lindberg originally applied for and received funding for. And the, it's a renewal. The description that's attached on page forty-eight provides examples of how the funds have been used primarily for English language learner tutors, for students, also for services for families in engagement opportunities and, and then incorporation of our students within the, the school and the classroom.
Any questions for Pat? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees approve the renewal of the refugee support grant. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the refugee support grant? Moved by trustee Kendall and second by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Other than to thank Shirley for making sure we renew it. So thanks to her. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the renewal of the refugee support grant, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to ratifying the renewal of the pre-employment transition services. I guess it's another acronym, pre-ETS agreement. And Pat, there is a description, but for those watching, could you just walk us through what it's about?
So the, the objective of the agreement with DPHHS on this funding source is to support high school students with disabilities, develop their independence, and to prepare for higher education or the workplace. And so the, the model here is a reimbursement model, so it's not necessarily a granting of funds, but a reimbursement based upon delivery of services as outlined in the, in the grant or the agreement itself. The, the services that are, that are provided or the scope of services allowed under the agreement are job exploration counseling, work-based learning experiences, counseling for opportunities for higher education, workplace readiness training, and instruction and self-advocacy. So those are the specific areas of service that are identified and, and as you'll see in the next agenda item, the, Ginny Haynes and, and her team has done a good job of, of providing those services and requesting reimbursement through this, this grant. There's about $220,000 worth of services that were provided last year in the high school.
Any questions? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that the trustees ratify the pre-ETS agreement for the coming year. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Decker. Is there a second? Second by trustee Duggar. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All trustees in favor of ratifying the pre-ETS agreement for another year, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to B3, which is a summary of grants through June 30th, 2019. And Pat, thank you so much to your staff and you for putting this together. I think it really helps the trustees understand the nature of our fiduciary duties when we look at this list. So do you want to just point out highlights or identify just generally what the report is about?
You bet. And I, I think this is, is something that we, we will replicate and would do so under the donation side as well. Superintendent Watson and I talked about the reporting of, of donations that they do in Bozeman, which seems like a great thing to replicate here. And so on page forty-nine, you'll see the grants that were active in 2019. I'm sorry, I don't have descriptions there for you. I have a couple of them to, to point out. The, you'll see the, the grant we just talked about, the ELDP HHS grant, the Department of Public Health and Human Services Grant for Refugee Support. That's the $20,000 grant. The, the Good Behavior Game, the St. Pat's Good Behavior Grant, and we've heard about that from Karen and Carol Ewing, I believe. The Centers Grant, this is the partnership with the NEA, the National Education Association, and our local MEA to develop instructional coaches and mentors for, for teachers. And then, of course, the 21st Century Grant, the George and Phyllis Washington Foundation Grant, and originally the SHAPE P20 Grant. The, on the high school side, you'll notice that the agricultural department, the OAG program has been very busy and very successful in generating grant funds. The Northwest Farm Credit Services, $75,000. Those funds were used to purchase some equipment for the meat processing plant. And then you have the grant we just talked about, the DPHHS Pre-Employment Transition Services Funding of $223,000. Let's see, the Centers Grant you'll see on the high school side also, as well as the 21st Century George and Phyllis Washington Foundation Grant. I guess the, the other one that, that, a couple more, the AgEd For All Grant from the state, that's for the meat lab, that $2,000, advancing egg education. That helped with some AgEd rental for some work that they had done out at the, out at the farm. And then the Missoula Electric Co-op, the $1,500, helped purchase some Chromebooks. So just to highlight a few of the, of the grants, of course, the Missoula Public Education Foundation on both the elementary and the high school side has a, a number of grants that are given to, based upon requests. So that isn't one grantee, that's a, a variety of teachers that receive those grants. So they've been doing great work for the, for our schools and our staff for a number of years now, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee McDonald?
Isn't that Dennis and Phyllis Washington?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Dennis and Phyllis Washington. Yes, I see what that says. Yeah, that's the right.
Any other questions? It's information only, but any public comment? Seeing none. Again, thank you so much for your staff to, for compiling that, and that's a great idea to also look at the donation side of things as opposed to the grant side of things. So thanks to Superintendent Watson and Pat for going to be working on that. Then we move on to a report, which is, or an update, which is the bond expenditure report. So Pat, there, I know there's some documents in, beginning on page fifty to support the report.
Yeah, and so this, this came up fast. We just looked at this throughout August, but did so because we, we pushed that quarterly report back a little bit. So I guess what I'd point out is a couple of things. We plan to have our owners' representatives halting here and after the third quarter to do a, another update for the board about projects, all of our projects, where they're at and what we have left to finish. And I think it'd be helpful to hear from them again. And it's, it's been a little while. We heard from Eric when we finished our RFP and RFQ process, and so he'll deliver some additional facts. Looking at the page fifty, you'll see that we're, we're nearing the home stretch in our bond projects with the anticipated completion of September 2020. So that's a year from now. We have in the elementary, or in the high school, really two in-depth active projects, the Big Sky and Sentinel School improvements. And then on the elementary, the primary projects there are Metal Hill, Porter, and Washington. And it's not to say that there isn't still work that Burley and his staff and the, isn't doing with some of the other projects in terms of warranty work and punch lists, but that's the primary work, those, those, those projects. So we are getting near the, the end of the, the bond projects. And looking forward to the halting report in the, in the spring.
Any questions?
Trustee. I am curious, what, what items land in the H, in the high school district and elementary district line items? Oh, sorry.
The primary one is the, the middle column, the technology piece. So that's the fiber build-out project for the high school and the elementary. Yeah, so we're, we're still waiting for E-rate reimbursement. So we have an appeal with the schools and libraries requesting some reimbursement under E-rate for, for that project, but we've yet to hear on that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and the soft costs on that line item are also pretty big, and I'm just curious, is that, was that also the technology or is, were there like halting pieces maybe that landed in that? Is, is that the overall project management or?
Yeah, so the, the soft costs there will be, we've allocated most of the soft costs within each of the projects. So within this area, we had soft costs related to the issuance of the bonds that are going to be located there. So each of our bond issuance involved an underwriting fee, and each of our bond issuance involved a attorney fee, and then some of the, the first issuance, we had pre-construction services that we reimbursed ourselves for, close to $600,000 for that type of work. And so it's, those are, we described them in the high school and the elementary as district-wide because they weren't tied to any one project. They're mostly related to the, the bond issue cost.
Any other questions? Seeing none. This is information only, but is there a public comment? Seeing none. Oh, I do have one question. Is this to date for all costs, like from the beginning of the bonds?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Through September.
Through September.
Through September.
Thanks. So now we are on five, which is a general fund update found on page fifty-one.
Okay, me again, sorry. So the, I'm looking at page fifty-two, and, and of course, we're early on in the general fund update, or the, the fiscal year, we're early on. And the, the couple of things I wanted to point out are really carry-forward mistakes that we identified when we looked at the year-end through 2019. And so the way our new accounting software works is that it'll, if you recall, when we looked at our year-end expenditures through 2019, it had continued to include some expenditures from the prior year, so that wasn't adjusted. That's occurring again with these expenditures. So if you look on page, page fifty-two, under in-service, in-service travel, that includes some professional development that were part of POs at the, at the end of last year, so are part of the FY19 expenditures. The larger ones appear under the supplies, equipment, and software. Those expenditures relate to the year-end expenditures for the curriculum, teaching and learning adoption, as well as some of the anticipated budget amendment expenditures that we made for fine arts equipment and, and the, the tractor up at Chief Charlo for the ONM department. So those expenditures are FY19 expenditures, and we'll back those out, and that report will be reissued. Those numbers will be much lower through September. They'll be more reasonable. And otherwise, the, the, you know, we're, we're in good shape through the first full quarter of the year.
Any questions? Trustee Lorenzen?
I'm just looking at the overtime salaries line, and you're well into your budget already, especially in the elementary on overtime salaries. Is that a need? I think we mentioned this before, is that a need to staff up in some areas?
Yeah, so, so we're looking at options there. It does, it, it, one of the items we addressed was the absence of custodial help, and so we've added floater staff on the custodial side to avoid some of that overtime. And then the, you're also looking at substitute salaries.
Always.
Yeah, and so those, those areas, you know, I think what, what we're working on is trying to minimize, and Superintendent Watson has, has worked with, with the cabinet and some, and the, and the, the schools in minimizing different professional development and trying to even the timing of professional development out to, to limit the amount of substitutes that are needed during the, during the week. So I think, you know, Dave provided a report last year and has to cabinet, which identifies Monday and Fridays as heavy use time for substitutes. And so we're limiting professional development to the middle of the week and not the Monday, Fridays. And then also limiting the amount of subs that are out for professional development. So it's, it's being addressed in that way.
Any other questions? Again, it's information only, but any public comment? Seeing none, then we move to the technology fund update, and so Ray, it's now over to you. And it sounds like your speaker's not on.
Yes. I do not have a speaker, but I have a teacher voice, so you should be able to hear me. Um, this is a typical report, nothing unusual, so I'll take any questions if you have questions.
Anyone have any questions? I do have one. Are, are we done? Are, are we done with the whole fiber optic laying in the ground, getting permission from the Department of the Army and everybody that we had to do all those, you're mostly Russell School, it's all done?
Everything is done and working very well.
Thank you to you and your staff and for the contractors who, you know, got through that permitting and laying in the ground process. Any other questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, and the next item after page is transportation fund update, and Burley, now we shift it over to you. And do you have a teacher voice or a boss voice?
I've got a father voice.
Okay, gotta work.
Yeah, we're saying about 3%. This is year-to-date through, this is through, I think, or, I'm sorry, September, so it's very little of our, our overall budget for the year, so I think it's just a kind of quick glimpse into what we have for September. I'd like to ask some questions.
Any questions? Thank you for putting the report together. I think that helps alleviate the need for questions, but appreciate that. Any public comment? Seeing none, then we move on to the building reserve fund. That's also you, Burley.
Yeah, so page 56, is, are we doing this elementary, is it elementary actually better?
Yeah.
So page 56 is the, it's elementary and 57 is high school, and things pretty self-respective. If there's any specific questions about a line item, I'd be happy to address it.
I'm trustee Lorenzen.
I don't see the balances, the, what are the balances?
Yeah, so we'll be bringing that to the board probably our next board meeting is what we're hoping to do, to look at. The elementary budget is very low. I'm not sure if there's even $10,000 left in the elementary budget. And then the high school, we'll get a more update. There was some, we weren't able to get the update before the, the item went into, into practice, but we can provide that at the next board meeting.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, thanks again for putting together that information, Burley. Then we move on to C personnel negotiations and policy. This is the, to approve the first reading of new board policy 7270, which addresses grants. As I talked with Superintendent Thane and now with Superintendent Watson, we discussed the probably appropriateness of having a policy that governs the way that we deal with grants. And so I think, I don't know if Pat's been the primarily author of it in terms of the legal language. So Pat, if you want to explain how you stole it from Bozeman and?
Exactly what I did. And so we're not reinventing the wheel here, but this is a policy similar to Bozeman's, some minor modifications, one of which is the, the dollar threshold. So we, the board had talked about a $5,000 threshold for grants that were required, the Board of Trustees approval, or any grant that's requiring expenditure of district funds. So the, the superintendent or his or her designee would have the ability to approve grants less than $5,000 that do not require the expenditure of district funds. And then other grants, 5,000 or greater, or require, requiring the expenditure of district funds would be brought to the board in a similar fashion as we do now with the grant summary.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Decker?
I have a question about if a grant is to be used for district personnel, the opportunity to competitively apply for a grant must be available to all district schools. And I'm curious about whether we're looking at gifts under the same criteria as grants in that regard, so, or if we're thinking of that separately. So if somebody wanted to donate a large sum to a school because they were an alumni of that school or whatever, that's not something that we would have to make, we wouldn't require that things be, but if there were a grant opportunity, it would, we couldn't say this is a grant opportunity, but only this school can. Is that what that means? So gifts are different?
That's exactly how I.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rob and I talked about that, and that's exactly how I interpret it as well. And, and gifts would be different because the donor's intent would dictate the, the use of the funds and, and where they would be located, if you will.
Sure. And would the board have an opportunity to consider those kinds of gifts?
Yeah, and you know, after we had this conversation at the last board meeting, we looked at the policy that does exist that addresses gifts, and so the, the, I, I think it would be, there is an existing policy, the policy, without having it in front of me, it, it talks about the board reviewing gifts and having the superintendent having some authority with respect to the acceptance of gifts. A similar policy provision in the Bozeman policy provides for sort of an, or monthly reporting or, or quarterly reporting of those, of those gifts. And so, yeah, I guess in short, the, any types of gifts, I think, that would involve sort of commitments by the district or, or were, I guess, unusual in nature, then I would see that going before the board.
Any other comments, trustee Kendall?
I, I am wondering if we could change the language in the first sentence just a little bit to say something like, "The board recognizes the importance of and encourages seeking grant funds," with the, with the idea that, I mean, when we look at the list of grants that we've gotten on page 49, which is really helpful and great to see, I mean, these are really important, basic needs. Suicide prevention, emergency, medical emergency preparedness.
ELL.
ELL, the, the wonderful support that we've gotten from the Washington Foundation and other organizations. And just, I mean, when I first was thinking about this, I, I thought, I wonder if the staff would think, if, if people who might be interested in writing a grant might say, "Ah, it has to go to the board, ah, I don't want to do that, it's too much trouble," or something like that. But just making it clear from the board perspective that this is something that we really value, that these funds provide basic needed services for our district, just a thought.
So could you say again what language you want to research?
Yeah, it's just adding a couple of words. "The Board of Trustees recognizes the importance of and encourages seeking grant funds." I don't know if we would need a, an, an object in there, the importance of staff seeking or, what would be a good word for that? Personnel? People, people seeking grant funds? Okay.
So you, just for example, we looked at the, you know, where were, the report about grants, part of it was Dr. Apostle reaching out to the Washington Foundation, so you want everyone from the top down to be encouraged?
Yes, and maybe even, you know, non, non-district employees, people in the community, you know, I mean, we wouldn't want to.
But we can't control them in our policies.
We can't, that's true.
Yeah.
Okay.
That part.
But yes, that's what I'm thinking, from top to bottom and bottom to top, everyone.
Oh, so I'll leave it to whoever makes a motion to adopt this, whether or not to modify the language to include that language. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So, any other comments first or questions?
A question.
Yeah, because we don't have a motion yet, so.
Right, is this, so this is something that would require a board resolution or a board motion to, to change?
The person who makes the motion can just change it in the motion they make tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should I make a motion then?
I was just gonna, make sure that there's, well, it's the question part first, and then we'll take a motion. Yeah.
Would putting encouragement to apply for grants in our policies create a burden or pressure or expectation that people would be asked to live up to, so that, for example, I'm, I'm just trying to foresee a situation where they might be asked, "Well, did you apply for a grant for that?" Like, and that might be something that we would want to avoid having in our policies, even though I totally get the spirit with which we're acknowledging that importance. I think we want to avoid the perception of telling people they haven't done their due diligence if they haven't applied for a grant.
Yeah.
Maybe?
Trustee Lorenzen? Sorry?
Well, I, I see things the way Grace does. Yeah, I know that's aspirational language in our policy, but I, I also see where it could become a burden. I'm a little concerned at the end, too, about where it says, "The opportunity to competitively apply for a grant." I think we know that different schools have different needs and demands, and it isn't really a level playing field in our district. And so we say they have the opportunity to competitively apply, but are we helping those that don't have the resources to do so? You know, I want to make sure that it doesn't just be more haves and more have-nots in that area.
Let me just ask Pat this, since, and perhaps Superintendent Watson, it's, you know, kind of, we're using Bozeman language. When I read it, I understood it to be if, if you're asking for a grant, that's going to be given to the district, as opposed to any teacher asking for a grant at their specific school or in their specific program within the school. But if it's something that would benefit the district as a whole, then it really isn't driven by the niche schools. And so if you're looking at those district-wide requests, you'd want to make sure that it would be available to all district schools. So if you're looking at, say, a net, there's the National Robotics Grant you can get, then you're going to make sure that all schools will have an opportunity, say it's a middle school robotics grant. And it would just fund a coordinator, say, in the district office, that you'd want to make sure then that all schools would have the opportunity for a robotics program. That's how I read it, is that?
That's right, that's. How I read it as well, that way.
Does that help trustee Lorenzen, or do you still see it could be read differently, or?
No, I, I mean, I guess I see, it's just, it's just when, the opportunity to competitively apply, we all know that's a, that's a loaded thing. So I, I guess to be sure that the administration would make an effort to make sure things are equally distributed, even if they weren't equally applied for.
Yes.
Is that what we're seeing?
Yeah. So I'll just, I have one kind of question, comment. My question would be, if we put in aspirational language, my concerns are a little bit like trustee Decker and trustee Lorenzen, would a staff's performance evaluation be measured against the number of grants you've applied for and things like that? So that would be just having, having, language indicating everyone's encouraged to do so makes it, is that become an evaluation tool? And I would be a little concerned about that, but I don't know if you have thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would, would ask Dave, too, to comment on the word encouragement. I mean, you know, we don't really see that in a lot of, but, but obviously encouragement is not a requirement. You don't, you don't see that as the same as an employee shall or an employee will.
I, trustee Lorenzen, when she stated aspirational language, I mean, I, kind of what I think, I don't know that that would be appropriate, but it's not mandatory.
Yeah, and it would never, would never require us to hold somebody accountable to an encouragement, am I right?
No.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Any other questions first, before we take a motion? Questions? So if there aren't any questions, then whatever motion someone wants to make concerning the adoption of the policy in the form that's been either presented to us or with any kind of modification, I would entertain that motion. And because you can either stay in its original form, or you can add in language that you want to add. Does that make sense, trustee Decker?
Okay, I move that we approve this policy with the following change, that the first sentence read, "The Board of Trustees encourages and recognizes the importance of seeking grant funds, et cetera, et cetera."
And all the remaining language?
Everything else stays the same, you just insert the word encourages and.
Okay. Is there a second? Is, is that a second? Okay, and so, and trustee Lorenzen, is that a second or a question?
I guess a friendly amendment. Can we put a comma after the 5,000 in the second paragraph?
Yes.
Yeah. So with that?
So amended.
And so you'll accept that amendment?
Yes, I'll accept it.
Second, okay. So everyone now understands the slight modification to the proposed policy that is presented for us for first reading? Seeing no one saying no, then is, we have a seconded motion, is there any board comment or discussion, trustee Kendall?
I think that is a useful discussion that we just had, and I, I would just want to make clear as the seconder of this motion that there would in no way be any pressure on anyone to, to go out and seek grants as a condition of anything. But just the statement that this is a good thing, this is time well spent, if people can, if people see opportunities, they should feel free to pursue them.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? I just want to thank trustee Decker for coming up with language that both satisfies my concerns that I had and also supports what we were all thinking would be a good thing to include. So thank you for that. Any other board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion as a modified, motion that's on the table, which includes language that's modified from what's in the packet, and approve it for first reading new board policy 7270 grants and authorize its posting for public comment. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you so much. And then we move on to D, which is a superintendent report on 100-day themes. And I appreciate and thank Rob for taking the time to do this. This is, to me personally, very valuable to see what he has seen in his first 100 days in the district, so, and I know he spends a lot of time gathering information, so.
So it was my hope that I could be able to see this without having to strain your neck too much. These guys have already seen it, so I'm going to stand in front of them. Yes, sir? Yeah. And the other thing that Marcia didn't mention, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get through all this tonight, as I started looking at this, is there's just a lot of stuff. And I want to give you all the time, too, to ask questions, so we may get through part of it, and Marcia's going to give me the nod when she thinks that we've done enough.
And let me just add on to that, there's a component of the presentation that we need to hear the beginning, and there's a second part that's really valuable in terms of the trustees being able to add some weight into, you know, what we see is important, but that's a really long conversation. So that's why we're thinking it would be presented in two parts, so.
All right, so it's been five months now, and so one of the things I said to our administrators last night in a meeting is, this is the week where we talk about what we're thankful for, and I'm thankful that I'm here with you all, working on this important work. I'm thankful for the team that I have to work with and our administrators as well. I'm thankful for the high-quality education that I've seen in our schools. And so really just thankful that I've been given this opportunity, and want to make sure that, that you understand that this is really important to me, it's important work. I know it seems like a lot of work, but it's great to be doing it with the team that I have to deal with, so wanted to say that. The other thing I'll just mention is, we've kind of shortened it to call it the 100-day plan, but it's a little bit more than 100 days, it's been five months, but it's intended to be just some feedback. So if you recall, on July 9th, I presented the entry plan to you all, and I talked about some things I wanted to work on the first three to six months. I just want to review a couple of the things that we talked about on that, on that meeting. So the purpose for me doing this was to start to develop a trusting relationship between myself and the board, and so that you understood exactly what I was going to be doing the first few months on the job. Also, I wanted to make sure we had a pretty efficient transition between Superintendent Thane and myself. I wanted to make sure that, you know, the wheels didn't fall off the bus and we were still moving forward. And so that was the second purpose for doing this, is to make sure we had that smooth transition. And then the third thing, which is- And then the third thing, which is probably the most important thing that we'll talk about tonight, is an opportunity for me to gain a perspective from our community, understanding what our successes are, but also understanding opportunities for growth. So I'll kind of explain how I did that and remind you of what was in the initial plan. So, a couple of things I promised you in July, I would engage in a learning and listening tour, and I'll explain more what that was a little bit later, but really, it's an engagement of all of our stakeholders, including yourselves. So you were part of that, learning and listening. Also, I guarantee that I'd report out to you some of the results that I'm seeing, which starts tonight and probably will continue into the next meeting. And then, I'm hoping that we can use the discussion that we have to really help us with our next steps of our strategic plan. So I hope that, you know, what you learned tonight, but also the discussion we have in the future, will help when we get into that strategic planning process. Number four I added, because I didn't realize how important it would be in July when I spoke to you, but what happened when I started talking to members of our community and our staff, I wanted to talk about aspirational things, about future things, but what they really wanted to talk about were the immediate imperatives, things that they really wanted me to focus on right away. And so, number four is something that I added, I started adding that question, what are the immediate imperatives? And that's really where the discussion will lead us tonight, is I want to share a few of those immediate imperatives with you and get your feedback. So here's, here's what I did. From July 9th to November 22nd, stopped for a second and just say thank you to Lenora and Hatton for helping pull this together for me, and engage all these folks in helping organize my calendar. But remember that I promised sort of an internal analysis and an external analysis. The internal, of course, would be staff members, but also partners of the district. The external would be community members and folks outside the district. And I asked really basic question in my interviews, what has been successful, what are things we need to work on for the future, and that last thing, what are the immediate imperatives that require my attention right away? So I'll breeze through these, and I can give you a copy of these if you're really interested in who I spoke with, but 88 points of contact internally, and it sounds like a lot, but remember, there's 11 of you, so there's 11 of the 88 right there. But really, great opportunity to talk to a lot of folks. Later on in the process, I'll show you where I still need to do some work. One of the areas I still need to do some work in is, I haven't had a chance to talk to too many teachers yet, or members of our classified staff, so that's still on my list to do. I did talk to a few of those folks, but not very many. And then the other folks that I haven't, haven't really spoke to yet is the students. So that's, that's also on my list to do for the future. Externally, 401 points of contact. I won't go through all of these, but I don't think they'll surprise you. You've probably heard of a lot of these folks, just a few of them, you know, the Kiwanis Clubs, Garden City Harvest, several folks up at the university, like the Mansfield Center, Missoula Interfaith. And then I also promised, too, about some of these external superintendents, and I have had a chance to meet with a number of those, so there's a couple, Des Schmidt and Lolo. Haven't made it to all those yet, but I certainly will. Here's a few more, nothing really surprising. Some of our, our large employers, Community Hospital, St. Patrick Hospital, Missoula Economic Partnership, just last week had a chance to talk to Davidson Honors College about the transition of our students into that, into that part of the college. So really exciting to talk to them as well. I mentioned this, I have not had a chance to talk to the entire city council, but it feels like I have. I've talked to a number of individual city council members that I've either met through, you know, meetings that we were at, and/or they have set up meetings with me, so quite a few of the city council members. I have spoken to all three county commissioners, that they had actually called a meeting with me specifically to talk to all three of them at the same time. And then the other really important piece you need to know about that, I've also talked to the administration, so the city and county administration, we had an excellent meeting, where we talked about some of our partnerships with the district. So that's been part of my tour. So let me stop there and just see if questions on who I've spoken to. Yeah?
You mentioned that you wanted to continue to connect with students.
Yes.
How about parents?
Yes, that, those, that's part of my external. So I see students as internal, but it could go either way. But yeah, I haven't, I haven't connected with as many parents as I wanted to. And one thing I talked to you about in my entry plan was, I was setting up a superintendent advisory council, and I haven't, I haven't stood that up yet, but I intend to do that after the first of the year, starting with the parent one, and then eventually teachers, classified, and student. All right, so not a lot here, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time, but just kind of share some broad themes. So what I, what I found out, really great asking people what they love about the school district, and really what it came down to for a lot of folks is their own school, or their own classroom, or their own teacher, they have a lot of pride in their school, and that came through really clear. And so, when I ask people, like, what are you, what are you excited about with the district? It usually related back to their school. I tried to get people to talk about the district overall, but really, they kept bringing it back to their school, which is understandable. When I talked to community members, they were, they were very proud of the improvements that were made with the bond work. Several of the community members that no longer had students in the district remarked, you know, they had been into some schools and saw some of the work, and really proud of the work that was done with the bond work, so excited that we could offer those improved environments for our students. Also, lots of folks impressed with the safety improvements in our building, so that seemed to be a theme that came across quite frequently. When I talked to the, the community at large, lots of folks really impressed with our staff, and quite honestly, it was our teaching staff and our building staff, because when you talk to folks about their experiences with the district, they very much contextualize that into what they experienced with their own children, or what they experienced in the district. And so, a lot of comments on they believe that we have a really high-quality staff. This fourth bullet, you know, doesn't seem like it would be really important, but quite honestly, that, that doesn't happen in a lot of districts, just a strong relationship between the district and the unions. I think that's important to understand, that it's, that's, we need that in order to do our work in the district. And people in the community actually saw that as a benefit. They felt like, you know, we weren't always arguing with our unions, and, and we were, you know, in a lot of disagreements. Now granted, you know, we have to work on that relationship all the time, but that's a really, I think, a success for our district to have that strong relationship. And I did hear that from a number of people that I spoke to. And then, of course, as I spoke to more and more folks in our community and our businesses, they really value some of the partnerships we have. For example, at Community Hospital, they really valued the work they got to do with the Health Science Academy, so they really appreciated the partnerships that we have. Not that we can't do more, but I definitely heard some successes in the community partnerships. When I asked folks to think more aspirationally, think about the future, this is sort of what I heard in some of my themes, they really want us to continue some of our high-quality programs, specifically if that, you know, if it tied to their school or their, their contacts, they really appreciated some of the programs we had, and of course, I already spoke to the partnerships. These ones are a little more nebulous, so I want to spend a little more time on those. What I heard as a general theme from a lot of folks is just the, the opportunity for more inclusion, not only from our community, but from our staff and our, and inclusion of student voice, although I didn't talk to a lot of students, there was a lot of people that felt like that was really important to think about student voice in our decisions. So I am so happy that we have students at our, at our board table, I think that's critical. And then finally, more inclusion of the community when we make, when we do big things like strategic planning. That came out pretty clear. This one, the fourth bullet, I heard from several folks as well. They felt like we had a lot of programs that helped individual pockets of students, but they really wanted to see a focus on programs that help all students. So I don't think that's a huge surprise. I think that probably, you've heard that as well, but they would like to see us focus in the future on success for all students. And then obviously, what I heard loud and clear from you all, but also from other community members, is just more involvement in the next strategic plan. Questions? Comments? Okay, so I'm going to talk, there's actually, I, I thought, well, maybe there'll only be two or three immediate imperatives, but there wasn't. There was 15 of them. And I want to be really clear, this is not, this does not represent all we do in the district. This is just what I heard from, you know, more than two or three people as things that they thought required my attention right away and required some support. As I started looking through this list, these are also things that require all of us to work together, not only the board to work with administration, but all of our, my cabinet to sort of work together. These are not things that I can just do by myself and, and solve these problems, it's going to require all of us working together. So I, I won't go through all 15 tonight, because I think it would really bore you to death, so, but we're, we're going to go through a couple, and this is really where I want you to push back a little bit, or ask questions on some of these if you, if you're not sure. But we, I basically whittled it down to about 15. And what I want to tell you about these is, I see these as things that require some immediate reaction or action, which means some immediate attention within the next 12 to 18 months. As I said before, it doesn't include all of our initiatives, so a great example, you all are well aware that Trustee Decker's working on, on the Zero to Five Program, which is a critical component for our district and our community, and the district is partnering with that as much as we can, but it's not necessarily an immediate imperative, because it, it seems to be clicking along really well, and the partnership seems to be working really well. So it's not something that rose to the top from the people I talked to about things that required my attention, if that makes sense. But I don't want to slight something like that by saying, we're not, we're not worried about that important program, because we are, and we're still going to work on it, but it's not an immediate imperative that, that requires sort of my attention right away. We may add some more things. I was just making a list today of some other things that, that have come up, but hopefully we can get some of this other stuff done. This is short-term work. I, I don't want you to look at this list and think, well, this is our strategic plan, and this is what we're going to do for the next five years. It's really not. These are, these are short-term things that just need some attention, need some attention from the cabinet and from the district, and maybe even the board, just to sort of get these things moving in the right direction. So I'll give you a couple of examples, and then give you a chance to reflect on these. So, oh, before I do, if you come into my office, you'll see this on my whiteboard. I'm going to start charting these out, so these little white cards here are some of the immediate imperatives. I'm going to start charting them out to try to figure out how long it's going to take us to do them, because when I realized that we had 15 of them, I realized that we can't do all of them at once. And so we are going to have to, we're going to have to do a little bit of planning on which things need to be started right away, and which things, you know, we might start in a few months from now. And that's really what Marcia was saying, where I need your help, too, is to help me prioritize these. So here's a couple of them, and we'll go through as many as we can, and then we might save the rest for the next meeting. Policies and procedures. One of my cabinet members said, this one's not very exciting. And so...
But I love it.
But what, what I'm starting to find out is that we have our policies that we work on in the district that you all see, and you help us develop these policies and wordsmith them. And then we have our procedures, sort of, that are not really connected to any policy, which concerns me, because we may have policies that get updated here at the board, but then it may not get updated in the procedure section. And then for, for, for our community, looking for, you know, kind of how we do business, they have to look in sort of multiple different places. So that's not typical of what I've experienced in other districts. Usually, a policy has an associated procedure that's sort of linked to it. And so, Pat and I have reflected on this, this is something that I believe we wanted to sort of work towards. So a great example is the policy you just approved, the grant policy. Obviously, the policy is pretty high-level. Then we would have a set of procedures that go with that policy, that it kind of describes the process for a staff member that wants to apply for a grant, there's sort of a procedure. And then there's a form that's also attached, the grant form, and all of it's sort of attached to each other with the same number, so I don't know what the number was on that, I think it was 7,000, right?
7270.
70 what?
7270.
70, 7270? So 7270 would be the policy, and then 7270P would be the procedure, and then 7270F would be the form. So everything is sort of linked, maybe not found in the same exact spot on the, on the website, but they're at least linked, so that a staff member could go and find a policy and find associated procedure and find a form. That, that's going to take quite a while to do that. I'll just, I'll be honest, I mean, that's something that's probably not going to happen this, this year, but we want to start working on it. Marcia?
And I just want to interject, because I do think it's really important to have current policies, and yet have the public understand the procedures are really the day-to-day mechanisms by which we carry out the policies, that if we have a cross-reference in each at the bottom, and therefore, when Superintendent Watson and I were talking about it, there are going to be times where the policy, we have a procedure that seems to be just floating out there, really not connected to anything, but I'm sure if I or legal counsel looks at it, we can find a more general policy where this can be aligned with, and therefore, a parent who wants to know, well, how come this happens? And there's a general policy that says the superintendent controls certain activities in the school, so at least there's a connection. So that's going to take a bit of work, but I think in the end, that would be really helpful for us, for the public, for staff, to have that connection to policies, procedures, and forms.
So this is housekeeping?
Yes, it, it is housekeeping, but it's, here's what's happening right now, is we're kind of stumbling on ourselves, because we're, we're looking in multiple different places to sort of find the answer. Maybe that's because I'm new here, I guess that's a benefit of being new, as I can reflect on that, but when I'm trying to find an answer for somebody, I have to check three or four places, and sometimes the answers are not necessarily connected, or they're not necessarily in conflict. I haven't found too many conflicts, but it is confusing. Now, our policies and our procedures are on our website, so anybody can find them, it's just, sometimes you have to look in two or three places to, to get your answer, so I'd like to try to clean that up, not only for community, but for our staff as well.
Oh, and actually, it would help me a lot. I go through the same process, I think, as superintendent, in trying to figure out which policy, you know, someone mentions a policy, I'm trying to figure out which procedure supports it or applies immediately, so I think it has a benefit to everybody across the board.
I think it's good that you've identified this, though.
Dual-language immersion. So I, I know that we've had some visitors here during public comment, I just want you to, to let you all know that, you know, I've engaged that group in some planning processes, and engaged the school staff in some planning processes. What I really see with dual-language immersion is, we sort of need to have a short-term plan that we're working on right now, just to kind of help with understanding of what the program looks like at Washington, but also, we need a longer-term plan, sort of that K-12 plan. And so, what I want you to know is, I'm interested in engaging a much larger audience in this discussion. I, I use a consensus process that I really value in order to bring groups together, and so that's my, that's my goal, is to engage a larger group in this discussion, not only, not only parents that you may have heard from here, but also other parents at Paxson or at, at Washington, and just engage them in a larger discussion around that K-12 plan. So that, that's going to take a little work. It's not something that, you know, we can just say, you know, here's the answer, here's the solution. It's going to take some collaboration, not only from the parents, but also our staff and our building principals, to really develop sort of a longer-term plan. But my hope is that we would have a plan that we could present to the board as, you know, this is the plan that collectively we agree on, and that there won't be so much confusion around what it looks like at various grade levels.
Well, because his is on, yours can't.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's just...
My question would be, is, is, when you look at this, are you also going to look maybe more than just Paxson and Washington? Or, or so that, or giving the options for people don't want, that don't want to be in it at all, wherever they are?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly why I want to make sure I involve a larger group of parents and, and staff members. You know, I, I always go back to the question, are we serving all students with these plans? Are we making sure that we have options for all students? So those are some of the things we need to flesh out. What's interesting to me, and I, it's, as I learn more and more about the international baccalaureate process, that they actually require an additional language, so we are, we are doing some Spanish, both at, at Franklin and Lewis and Clark. It's not a dual-language immersion, but we're exposing kids to other languages. So that, there's, there's other opportunities there, and I think we just need to flesh that out and understand what it looks like across the district.
Any other questions?
Okay, high school credit. So... this is a great example of what I was talking about earlier with policies and procedures. We have a policy about high school graduation, but the actual requirements are not listed in the policy. They're available on our website, but Lenora found out that there's slightly, there's some slight differences if you look at Hellgate website versus Sentinel website versus Big Sky website. Overall, the, the graduation requirements are the graduation requirements. They are what they are and we're following those. But they're not necessarily specified anywhere. So that's an example of where we just need to clean that up. There should be a graduation requirement policy and then a procedure that specifies the requirements. And then things like, you know, can there be substitutions for certain requirements? That all should be specified in policy and procedure. So we just need to do some cleanup work around the graduation requirements. Not recommending to change those at all at this point. I just want to make that clear, but we just need to do some cleanup work about where we, where we have those listed and what, what the exceptions are. There's also some discussion around what happens from eighth to ninth grade. We, as you're well aware, and I think you know now, we've got students that may or may not be taking high school classes, whether it be through Digital Academy or some other way. And the question comes up if they're an eighth grader in a high school class, should they be getting high school credit for that class? That's something we just need to make a determination on. Hasn't been decided yet. We've got part-time students at the high school for a variety of reasons, but it seems to be a little unclear as to why they're part-time. So I want to spend some time working that out as well. Sometimes it's because they're working. Sometimes they're taking classes at the university. Sometimes they have just finished all their, their requirements and they, they don't have any more classes to take their senior year. But if you're, if you're not aware, I mean, we, this does impact our overall numbers and our, what we receive for, for A and B. So it's something I think we just need to flesh out and get some rules around part-time students. Digital Academy credits, that's an ever-evolving process. How students get credits, what they get credit for. So I think there needs to be some work around that. And then there's other credit options out there as well. So this is a great example of, of something that I'm not quite sure how long it's going to take. So whenever you see this TPD, that's to be determined. So when you go back to this chart, I'm going to put that on this chart somewhere, but I don't know how long it's going to take us to do it or when we should be working on it. But I know that we need to do some cleanup around high school credit.
So let me interject. There's thirteen more individual topics to go through. And one of the concepts at a, at a future board meeting is that we would actually get the materials ahead of time and I, I copy, so I'm cheating because I know what the others are. But we would each get little squares so that we, we would each know what they are. And in a work session, individually, we can prioritize what we as trustees would like and then see if there's any consensus among the eleven of us as to items which we might give Superintendent Watson more direction. And I know he's using that model when he's speaking with his cabinet and with other people. So is this an okay time to stop and we'll be talking about them in much greater length and more substantively at another time? Or do you want to hear about a few more? Because there's several more. Thirteen more. Okay.
A little more. I mean, we may as well go a little more.
Yeah, sure. So, does someone give me a signal? Because we have one, one additional thing on the agenda. So.
Yes, and I appreciate the, the notion that I, we'd get some consensus from the board, but when I did this with my team, we didn't get any consensus. So that's okay. But it helps me to, it helps me to actually hear what your priorities are when we get to the end of the day, because that'll help me decide, you know, what we need to work on right away. So somebody, somebody told me a long time ago, you know, Rob, you can do anything you want, but you just can't do everything. And so that's really what this is about. We can't do all this at one time. This is all important stuff, but unfortunately we can't do all of it at the same time. So that's really, I would need your help to prioritize some of it. This one, this one did actually come out as pretty high priority with my team. And that's to take a look at our organizational structure in our district. So what I'm talking about here is the organizational structure of the cabinet and the central administration. There's some, there's some, what I perceive as inefficiencies, and I actually did hear that quite a bit in my learning and listening tour with a variety of different staff members. There are just some inefficiencies with our org structure and so we want to try to clean that up. Sometimes we're not quite sure who's supposed to be doing what and that could quite frankly be my fault, being new to the district and not understanding, you know, who does what. But there are some inefficiencies in our org structure. So the best example I can give you is like the dual language immersion thing we just talked about. Now that exists at two different schools. Those two schools are supervised by two different people in our, in our org structure. It also involves curriculum, which is another person in our org structure. It also involves budget, which is another person in our org structure. So we have a, we have a problem like that that crosses over several people. It's kind of unclear. It's like who's supposed to do what with that issue. So it can slow everything down and I just think we need to consider some efficiencies around our org structure. Reorganization of the roles and responsibilities, I think will help. And I also wanted to point this out, Superintendent Thane last year got approval for the addition of a special education director. That is something that I, I too believe is important. I want to let you know that we did search for that person, but I think it was too late in the, in the summer when we went out to search for that. So we didn't, we didn't have a lot of really highly qualified applicants. So we're going to do another search for that position and, and try to add that to our org structure. But that's even going to be more important that we look at efficiencies and roles and responsibilities when you talk about adding another position. So I, I know that was approved last year and I believe that that, that the discussion around that was using some special education money or some other monies that Pat and Mark had identified to cover that position. Couple more?
I, I know. You turn your stuff.
Oh, sorry. Yep.
And I know we've brought this up privately, but I want to see the district structured in a way that the superintendent can go on vacation, can stay with us for fifteen or twenty years. And that when the time comes for a transition, we have at least one in-house option that's very apparent to us. That, that, last year, it did not feel secure going through the process. I was so thrilled we got Rob and I was scared to think, what if we hadn't? And so I brought this up a lot of times, but I, I really want the superintendent to be able to go on vacation. I think it's really important. So.
Yeah, I, we did look and right now every cabinet member reports directly to Rob. So there, and that's an unusual structure in other school districts to have every single person report directly to Rob. So that's one thing that I was looking at.
Okay, good. Couple more. These ones that I think are, yeah, these are pretty quick. So we, we have an evaluation system for our principals. I'm not, I don't want you to believe that we don't have one. What I'd like to see is a more prescriptive evaluation system. A system that's based on standards, that's based on, you know, what we know of effective principles. Sort of aspirational things that principals should be working towards. So there, there's actually a state process that's pretty good and, and I'm piloting that right now with my cabinet members. And we're piloting with a few principals. So I think we're, I think we're kind of on the way to getting this one completed. But one of the things that's really important with principal evaluation is setting goals and establishing what they believe they can do at their level to improve student achievement. And just having that rich discussion with a principal multiple times of the year, like what's your goal around student achievement? And then mid-year, what is, you know, how's it going? What's the data look like? Having that again at the end of the year. That, that wasn't necessarily part of our current evaluation system. So that's one thing that I think will really be helpful to add. And then also professional learning goals. So our school administrators are very talented people, but they still need to grow as professionals. And so we're asking all of them, or the system would ask all of them to focus on a professional learning goal. What do they need to do as professionals to grow? This, this one, and then I'll stop, is the, we've talked about this before, but in other counties in the, in the state, they have this interdisciplinary child information team. This is coordinated through the county attorney's office and it brings together lots of folks, school district folks, mental health folks, probation, lots of different folks coming together to sort of provide wraparound services for a child or a family. And that doesn't currently exist in Missoula and it's, and I've seen it work really well in other, other communities. So I'm hoping that, that through the course of the next six months, we can engage our community around that and, and our, and our folks that, that work for the county and pull that team together. It would not, not only help us, but it would help some of our outlying districts as well, some of the smaller districts in our county. So I've had a discussion with some of our county superintendents about this as well and they're, they're pretty excited about that because they've seen it work in other communities.
I just want to throw in my support for that. I was a coordinator of special needs school, you know, prior life and we hosted the Community Interagency Council, which is what we called it. And there's so much positive work that comes out of that. That one thing, if you can pull the agencies in this community together and something like that, you can accomplish an amazing amount of work. So.
And it is allowed under state law. In fact, that was something that we reviewed here before is that it's something that's come up in the legislature. It's something that's allowed under state law. So I think we just need to figure out, you know, how we can get it done here in Missoula. And I want to be clear, I think there's support for this. I think it's just a matter of getting everybody, all the players in the room, they can get it organized.
So there's eight more. Keep going for a while more? Or move on to the superintendent's evaluation? I, I'd suggest moving on because we're going to look at these in-depth and you will have the cheat sheet I've got it by, because each of them, when you start looking at them are equally important. And we could have a longer conversation tonight, but if it's okay with everyone, since it, it's not that we're limiting the discussion, it's just we're limiting it tonight. Trustee Newell?
So do we look at this at our next board meeting or what is our timeline?
We'd like to look at it in December because we lose the second December board meeting and then we get into superintendent evaluations and things in January. So that, when I met with Rob today, we're, we're thinking next board meeting. But it means we'd be adding a work session, or work-like session at the end, so that we can have a discussion about prioritizing the, the many identified, you know, things that he would like some guidance on. So it, we'll try to keep the rest of it light in order to have that conversation. Okay? Does that make sense to everybody? Okay? And so thanks, thanks for putting that all together, Rob, and for all that work that it took to put it together and all the thought that it took to engage in that process. And so E is board. It's the superintendent evaluation tool. It's information. So attached, beginning on page fifty-nine is the information tool that we have been using. We had discussed it a couple of times in terms of what tool we wanted to use to evaluate superintendents. And after those discussions, we adopted this form. You know, first of all, just some feedback, if the trustees generally find that this form is okay, or if we want to put together a committee to again reevaluate whether this is the way we want to do it. For me personally, it had subjective components and areas where you could write comments. It gave you ideas to think about, but you're not bound by them. And for example, in Superintendent Thane's first year, there was really no way to even evaluate negotiations with unions because that had never happened. And so you can have a numeric evaluation for a personnel file, which is pretty clean and helpful because you could see from year to year if there's been progress stagnation or things like that. But also, we had agreed that the superintendent could read the comments. And so that was, but those are not part of the formal personnel file. That's for his, his or her, but his personal use. So that's more or less what we adopted. The first part of this. And so just some, any thoughts or discussion about that? You're generally okay with the first part?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate, as I said about the principal evaluation, I just appreciate knowing what the standards are and, and, and then drafting goals around those standards.
And then if you look at the packet, which is on page twelve in the tool, but on page seventy in the packet, this is the portion of what we adopted, which we really didn't flesh out in the first year because of the bond activities that, that was a pretty big focus. And it was just in terms of the number of meetings that trustees were asked to be involved with and sitting on committees to pick out general contractors and architects and other things to have more board work sessions to come up with goals seemed like an overwhelming task. But at this point, since, you know, Superintendent Watson's on board, I, I'm thinking we will have a conversation at some point where we would actually use this, not necessarily at the same time that we have to get the evaluation done, because that's kind of damp, it's limited by statute, which is February first. Is that it? Or January thirty-first? February first. But we would have a separate meeting where we would actually put together the goals for, and, you know, and it's a little different than the strategic planning meetings that will be going on, because that's a big picture for the district. But this is just evaluation of the superintendents. What goals you'd like to see, what goals we'd like to see, what kind of, you know, whether we think the decisions that are being made are, you know, it says rating, but it's like, is this a good goal for the superintendent to use his time on and comments like that? And so we could come up with a format where each of us could fill this out after discussion and he could receive it, or we could talk about the fact, I could synthesize it and just, you know, send it on, which was the earlier model we used before we came up with this model. But any thoughts about, if you have thoughts, Rob, about how to move forward with this, you'll begin on page seventy. It's, it just leaves, you know, student achievement, staff, professional development, stewardship of resources, cultivate involvement. And those are the goals that were involved. Trustee Kendall?
Which are from there?
Pardon?
Those come from, directly from the Smart Schools twenty-twenty. So that, that wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, but it got adopted into this.
Just to help me understand and maybe others, if, if we were to put something in that top box, student achievement on page seventy, what, what would be some measurable goals or some ways of articulating a board priority?
Yeah, that's actually, that's the conversation we need to have. I, I don't have an answer for that yet, because at the time when we, you know, these were used, everything was so focused on, on successful implementation of the bond that we weren't, we were doing kind of spot checks on other things as opposed to a bigger picture. So I'd love to have, I mean, we'd all love to have more input, me in particular, more input about it. And I don't know if you have any thoughts, Rob?
Yeah, I, I would just say that we can write, we can write goals here. I, I would prefer that we collaborated on, you know, sort of what you wanted me to work on and then write goals around those areas. So it could be student achievement. Obviously it should be. That's important to our district, but you know, we're doing a lot of things already with staff professional development that I could easily write a goal about, but maybe that's not where you want me to spend my time or focus. So I think what, you know, what I'm showing you now will help a little bit because you'll see what some of the current immediate imperatives are and maybe write some goals around those.
So, oh, go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up. So, you know, so this would be a collaborative thing where we would all work together to figure out what these measurable goals would be. And it could be something like graduation rates. It could be test scores. It could be whatever, absentee days, that kind of thing. Okay.
And I was thinking it would be goals kind of in between one year or two years, not a five-year strategic plan. And so thanks for pointing that out, trustee Decker, that these, you know, came from our current strategic plan. So we can change these completely. I mean, these are very flexible with us. So that might be a conversation, just as Superintendent Watson said, and trustee.
You're talking about doing these goals as an over and above the evaluation, not including evaluation.
Correct.
So this would be a separate conversation that we would have. I just want to make clear that that's what's going on here.
And I, I think that was the intention when we adopted the tool and I, I, now that you remind me that the goal aspect came from Superintendent Thane incorporating that and hoping to get to it and we never got to having a, a dedicated meeting or work session about those, but they may have changed by now. So I think the second part of the evaluation tool is not really a valuation tool. It's more a, a working document that helps give guidance both from us to the superintendent and for, to the superintendent, I mean, from the superintendent to us about what he's capable or what, you know, he has the resources to deal with. So I think we've got a lot of flexibility. They just happen to match up with what our current strategic plan is. But yes, trustee, wait, I guess I would plan on being a separate either at the end of a board meeting or a half an hour at the end of the board meeting, just figuring out, do we want to keep the form, the four, I think it's four pages? Four pages, you know, having this language or some other language. But I, the, the- But I, the, the first conversation that we have at the next board meeting, where we actually go through all of the 15 or 16, I think that will help inform our decisions about what we want to have to be the goals for the medium term, not strategic planning goals, and so that would be a separate conversation, without having too many meetings over the course of the next six months. But I, I, I think there are good discussions to have. Does that, does anyone else have a comment, trustee Lorenson?
Only that it's, um, I think, too late to not keep the form this year?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, so if we're gonna change it, we'll change it like early next winter, okay?
So, does this whole evaluation, is it for student trustees to do as well, or just the 11 trustee members? I'm just wondering.
We can talk about that. By statute, the, the elected trustees have to do it, and so it's mandated by state law. We've never had a discussion about student trustees also evaluating it, because, you know, I'm trying to think of if you're seeing all the aspects of what the form asks, like, how, how would a student trustee be able to evaluate it on union negotiations kind of things? So, we could maybe modify it, but that would be great, I'm sure, that would be great input, so good idea. Yeah, just, it's, some of the topics might be difficult for student trustees to weigh in, but I'm sure we can order up the ones that would be more practical. Good point. Yeah, great suggestion, thank you, and we'll talk about it further. Any other thoughts on here? I know it's a little muddled, but I think the conversation is a good conversation to start having. Trustee Sturis?
Great, great point, it's a good point. It's like, I often don't know how to evaluate these, because we don't see the labor relations. All we do is see the CBAs that come, I mean, even when we see, we don't see the CBAs, we just see the increases in salaries.
I guess one, one measure of success is there's no strike. There seems to be a cordial relationship between, you know, union leadership. It's unusual to actually see union leadership included in a cabinet for a superintendent. So, there's, I think there's some measures that we, we can look at, even though we're not in the room during the negotiations. But I think there's external points that we can do.
We're looking for things not happening.
Yeah, right, well, in that instance, that's probably true.
I guess my only other comment would be that I think that we should reevaluate the evaluation sheet after we do strategic planning and for our benefit, as to what is more beneficial for us to evaluate the superintendent. Because in that way, we know exactly, we don't have to, to say that we don't understand what, you know, our input for negotiations are, but that would be my suggestion.
I think that sounds like a great idea, because I know we didn't have a great tool before, and so this was something more than what we had. But I, I've found that the few times that I've worked with it, that there's, um, some redundancy to it, and I can't point to those immediately, but I, I felt like in going through it, it's like, well, I feel like I just considered this and commented on it, but now it's coming up here. And then there's some things that are just really difficult to evaluate. And so, um, I, I know we can't change it now, but I, I think that Anne's suggestion is a very good one.
And I don't always have the, the best memory, but my recollection is the, what was happening before was, it, it, there wasn't a form. It was just kind of a free form, everyone just wrote things down. And the chair synthesized talking points out of it and presented it in the file, which is a little bit subjective and, and puts a lot of burden on the chair. And so, I know Anne and I, and I was thinking in third person, we're part of a smaller committee, and we looked at multiple evaluation tools, and we brought forward, I think, two maybe or three, and then the board picked this one. But you're right, after using it for a while and understanding what, where its deficiencies or redundancies are, I think it's a great idea, and I'd suggest, let's do it in the summer, where if there's a, you know, a time where we can spend a little extra time on it, and we don't have pressing needs during the school year, it would be a good time to do it, maybe, you know, before July 1st or something. So, I agree with, I think those are great ideas. Any comments down this way? Any other comments? Trustee Wake?
Do we have to write a procedure for the trustees to be able to do the valuation?
There's a policy.
I, I'm just, I, we wanna tie up all these ends, and I'm just trying to think that if they wanna participate, which I think is an excellent idea, then we need to make sure that there's a connector there, that, that we have the policy that says that they can, even though the state says it's only for us to be able to do it. So, I, just some food for thought.
Yeah, I, I'll talk to, um, board, or board council about that in terms of if that's more of a procedural kind of thing that could be tied into, the trustees can do it, but the student trustees may do it kind of thing, just legal language versus, so that we don't have to have it wrapped up in policy. But that's a, yeah, but I think that's a good idea to have some kind of reference to it. And there's one final thing I was gonna say, but now I've lost that train of thought. Yeah, so, if, if you've got this, can you use it to, for your evaluations, or do you need a separate version?
I guess it was sent out electronically, so we...
Can we send it up?
Does it send electronically as a Word document, though, or just as part of the PDF?
It was a Word document, 'cause it could be modified, because I got some back electronically and some back handwritten. So, I, I think we sent it out. Yeah.
If that's not a problem, Lenora, that'd be really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, in the end, I have to print them all out, because they remain in a file, and that's, I mean, so, in the end, there's a paper document created out of them all.
Yes, but when you don't have to print them handwritten.
Yeah, true, true. And people don't, we had a discussion, you don't have to learn cursive or understand cursive for those who are still using. So, any other comments on the superintendent evaluation or the process and some discussions about future modifications that might be made? Seeing none, we're actually two minutes before 8 o'clock. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
I know, I'll be really fast, I promise. Oh, you're so kind. I do wanna say, I love the idea of standards and indicators, and the, the evaluation process and tool that you're using is actually closely aligned with that of the teacher evaluation tool, which is in the back of our 102-page contract, which I, thank goodness, you didn't have to wade through all of that, right? I mean, yeah, but I do love that there's a labor component, because we do work together pretty often, and working on that relationship, like Superintendent Watson said, is a constant, always-in-process kind of thing. So, we're very proud of it, and we keep working on it, yeah. I do also wanna thank you guys for being so thoughtful in all that you do, word choice and keeping in mind the staff when we look at processes and procedures and policies, so thank you, we do appreciate that.
And with that, we are adjourned.